President of the ATEA, thank you for giving your presentation. You all know full well, I mean, it takes all of us in the Amblissey family to get a school year off as well as, I think we've gotten this school year off. But that starts really long before many of us are back on the job, so to speak. And so, tonight's inspiring moment really celebrates and highlights some very, very important people to us, and that's our support services staff. From maintenance to transportation to child nutrition, all of them really do the yeoman's work and do the heavy lifting to be sure that all of our facilities and our buses and the meals are ready for the children when the school year gets underway. So, we're not without any further ado, if you would run the tape.
Support services involves child nutrition, it involves transportation, and then it involves maintenance. And so, let's just take it from a child's day. So, we transport close to eleven thousand students in an hour. And so, the child's day is one of those that rides a school bus. That's how you start your day out, so it's very important. There's a lot that goes into us before it goes out to the street or a route.
We want to make sure these are running well.
Well, we start out early in the morning, about quarter to six. It's a long day, but it's still rewarding and enjoyable.
Our role is to ensure that the buses are safe for the kids to get to school. And not just, not just our children, but the drivers and, you know, people on the road as well protects those too.
Then think about the child that's actually now in that school. Where does maintenance fit in? If the lights are working, if the plumbing is working, if the roads aren't going bad?
Whenever we come in, we grab our iPads and we look up what work has ever been seen in the different schools and check, make sure we got lights. We got water, we got AC. But if you don't have AC, if you don't have power, you don't have much to nothing.[172.23][172.23](LAUGHTER)
Everything is on, air conditioning is working, lights are working. So, what does the facility look like as far as school? So, there's a special staff there.
I come in, I do paperwork, I look at our schedule, just see what's on the schedule for the day and what we need to do to take care of our customers, to take care of our students, our faculty, and to take care of their needs.
So, they've made it to school, they walked in, everything's working, the building is clean, it's ready for the start of the day, the student goes through their morning and then, oh, it may be time for lunch, or they get there, it's time for breakfast.
We have thirty-two hundred kids, we have twenty-seven women working in the kitchen, and, I mean, they come in anywhere from five-thirty to eight. They vary, and they're busy from the time they get here till the time they get through. Preparing lunch, preparing breakfast, preparing for the next day, checking in groceries, cleaning. They just stay busy the whole time.
You know, in our, in our mission is to give the children good nutritious food so they can learn. And then also, I think another thing, and this is just my own philosophy, is give them a smile with as much as you can.
I think it's, I think what, I think what's on our vehicles is supported by our service. We have a lot of dedicated staff members that focus on, you know, seeing them. It's about the students, it's about the society.
But make sure they're made comfortable, clean, and nice.
I love the children, and I enjoy the people I live with. Mainly, I love the children.
I like knowing that they have eaten a good meal. When they come in as ninth graders, they're little, they're still kids, watching them develop and grow and change. And when they leave, you know, they're young adults, just the one-on-one with the kids and helping them, because that's what I do. I love to help people, and that's what I do.
I have found in, in doing this, it really, the most has a lot of fun. A lot of hard work, a lot of fun. And a lot of times, surprisingly, is a smile from a child can really make them say a whole lot.[322.22][322.22](MUSIC)[323.22][323.22](APPLAUSE)
(APPLAUSE) 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 (APPLAUSE)
We do have the best support services staff, and I know I'm biased, but, but the best by far in this state. They care about kids, they, they live that, they show that. I have yet to experience really any aspect of our support services that hasn't been of the highest quality possible. So, thank you all very, very much. Now, I'd like to ask Jenny Mount and Melissa Hayhurst and Trey Kramer to go to the podium. And I'm really thrilled that we get this evening to publicly recognize and commend all of our secondary school Teachers of the Year. President Scarpoe, if you will join me out there.
Oh, I thought you were going to be nice fucking talented. (LAUGHTER) (APPLAUSE) (APPLAUSE)
Tonight, in honor of seventeen extraordinary individuals who have been ATEA of the Year for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. These individuals work at different grade levels and subjects, but share a common trait, a passion for helping students succeed. Listen to how Ms. Judy Bevan of Disciplinary Alternative Education Program describes her job. When adults ask me what I do, I proudly say, "I am a high school math teacher." They quickly deflate my bubble by telling me how much they hated math at school. I believe teaching math is a privilege. Several times, I have felt like I was accomplishing nothing. But then, students would tell me how they made their first A or B on a math test when they passed a math test for the first time ever. That is why I'm a block. Ms. Jennifer Roach of Wood Creek Middle School describes teaching this way. Teaching is my heart and passion. The kids I teach every day have my own. I greet them every day at the door, and I make my classroom warm and inviting when they come in. My motto is, "You can't teach a kid until he teaches a kid." Our kids are the real winners because of these Teachers of the Year and the way they lead and inspire an Amblissey. Middle and high school Teachers of the Year will receive plaques this evening. Elementary school teachers will receive plaques at the October 18th. Ms. Melissa Hayhurst, this is a different tenant, will now recognize those three teachers of the year. Good evening. Middle school teachers come into students' lives at a crucial point in their development as they are just entering adolescence. Our Teachers of the Year have a gift for helping students learn to manage new freedoms and responsibilities while also taking the students further in their academic learning. They truly make a lasting difference in students' lives. I am thrilled and honored to recognize our middle school Teachers of the Year. From Atascocita Middle School, Kyle Sampson, Campus Teacher of the Year.[563.29][563.29](APPLAUSE) From Creekwood Middle School, Kellyanne Olson, Campus Teacher of the Year. And she cannot be with here, with us here tonight, but we will make sure we give her a plaque. I just felt it was important that we recognize those who are not here as well as those that are. From Umbel Middle School, Jamara Howard, Campus Teacher of the Year.[597.16][597.16](APPLAUSE) And also a district finalist.[603.66][603.66](APPLAUSE) From Kingwood Middle School, John Barron. John is not only a Campus Teacher of the Year, he is also honored as a district finalist. And unfortunately, he cannot be with us tonight. From Riverwood Middle School.[624.04][624.04](APPLAUSE) From Riverwood Middle School, Brady Flores, Campus Teacher of the Year.[634.16][634.16](APPLAUSE) From Ross Starling Middle School, Lisa Alter, Campus Teacher of the Year. And unfortunately, she cannot be with us tonight.[653.79][653.79](APPLAUSE) From Timberwood Middle School, David Shout, Campus Teacher of the Year.[663.93][663.93](APPLAUSE) And last, but certainly not least, from Wood Creek Middle School, Jennifer Lynn Roach, Campus Teacher of the Year.[679.00][679.00](APPLAUSE) (APPLAUSE) So, Mr. Trey Kramer will recognize our high school Teachers of the Year. Trey?
There's a special connection between students and teachers. Teachers who are being honored tonight will never be forgotten by their students. Students will remember them throughout their lives, for paving their way to future success. It's an honor for me to recognize our high school Teacher of the Year. In the Cambridge School, Aaron Small, Campus Teacher of the Year.[757.12][757.12](APPLAUSE) (APPLAUSE) 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 (APPLAUSE)
Thank you for letting me address you. It's great to see some familiar faces and Keith, I had no idea. Several years ago, Keith was part of our endeavor and our vision of creating this great facility that you have here in St. Louis. Nelson Mandela said in one time in a speech that sports has the power to inspire and it has the power to unite people in a way that little else does. And who would have known that several years ago, our paths would cross and that it would unite us with all of you in building this beautiful facility, Turner Stadium, which we've had a small part because we had this vision to bring the Junior Olympics to town in two thousand and twelve. And as fifty-one thousand people descended upon the city of Umbel and deposited all of their money, we saw what a, what a great thing that sports could do for, for our area. And I'm really pleased just to, to be here today to say that we had another successful event this summer. A little over a month ago, we welcomed almost thirty thousand people to the city of Umbel. We hired an economist and we did intercept surveys to really get good statistics around the numbers and how long they stayed, which money they spent, did they, did they go to our restaurants, did they stay in our hotels? And I'm happy to report that the total economic impact, according to a report, was forty-nine point three million dollars. The seventeen million dollars in incremental increased resident income right here in the city of Umbel. Almost one million dollars in extra taxes went to the city. And about four point one million dollars included the county taxes and the state taxes that were collected. And as you know, those taxes get put into roads and police and all of the kinds of other things. So, it's great all the way around. You couldn't do it without you and, and your support of us and without Troy Pike, Mr. Melstrom. I'm sure you already know this, but they are such a tremendous asset to us. They actually go with us and help us out and convince people to bring these events. And many times, people say, "To me, we're going to have a national competition in a high school facility." And then they get here, they can't believe it. They think it's better than most college facilities. And we are pleased to announce that the two, that the A and U Junior Olympics will be coming back in two thousand and sixteen. And, and that I just want to just say thank you so much, Troy Preston, for having a vision from the beginning, Keith, for having the beginning, having that vision with us and being down. And these people put in long hours. It starts before the event even gets here because we have to bring in fencing and dates and put up banners. And, and, and it's long, hot days, fourteen-hour days, day after day, and they come with a smile. I've never worked, we work all over the county and all over the city, I've never worked with the more dedicated and hardworking staff. The buses, they run on time. They, they're there every morning with a smile. The medical team, the custodians, everybody, this is the team. And I have parents tell me over and over again that they spent thousands of dollars to get here, their, their child made it at the state or regional level, and they spend money buying and income, and they can't believe it, they get here and there's billboards and there's signage, and they're just so excited. And these are our future programs, and thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE) 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 (APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Dean Williams, and I represent Kingwood High School.
I'm Curtis, and I represent Wines.
We appreciate everything you can do for our students.
We make every year better than the last school this year.
And on behalf of Kingwood High School, thanks again for all that you do. We were all talking before the meeting, and the one thing we all have in common is that since we were little, we've seen you all at our schools, football games, plays, concerts, school carnivals, and all of our athletic events. Each school has T-shirts for you to wear this year, whether you're at our school, the grocery store, mowing the lawn. You clearly represent us all, all of the time. Thank you.
You guys try your, your shoulder for this one? Appreciate it. Okay, now, taking it on, we will move to comments by individual board members. And, oh, no, I'm sorry, I meant to say, Mr., I know a lot of you obviously know this, and we have a family event, a celebration, and we have to attend to send some regrets and good well wishes to everyone. A warm year. Uh, Mr. Rushing?
Sure. I'll keep it brief. My voice is halfway, halfway here tonight, but just want to welcome everyone back to new school year. The Rushing household, we're two, three in public schools now, one more to go, so we're excited about that. But looking forward to another, another great year of involvement with this district. I'm sure we'll be even more blessed than we was last year, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, sure. Welcome everybody back to school. This is an exciting time of year following the football, our school starts. We're going to be visiting the cooler for a couple of months, so this is great. Um, I want to announce some foundation highlights. I guess we're not going to be the official discussion of our committees. Is that correct? No, we are. We give you that. Okay. And I'll reserve those comments. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sid?
Troy President, did y'all pay for that nice public service announcement about what a great job y'all are doing and how you're earning your keep? I like that, so. No, it was. It was a great event this summer. That was, that was really neat to hear the, the economic impact, and those are the kind of things that, that we're really trying to bring, showcase this community, not just our, our school district. And events like that due to the support of our taxpayers and the support of our entire community. Those type of things, we can continue to bring to our community, showcase our school district at the same time. And support services, you know, y'all are a big part of that. The bus service, the studio service, the police department, et cetera. Trying to get all that stuff taken care of, so we appreciate y'all. And for all the teachers of the year, I think they all have left already because they need their, their beauty sleep to get up bright and early in the morning to greet the kids, but welcome back, everyone, and it's going to be a great year.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conrad?
Yes, sir. I did just want to welcome everyone back and thank you for the easy transition going to new school year. I did want to thank you all for your work over the summer. I know how everyone was off contract, so the bulk of a lot of the partners' work happens over the summer, so we do appreciate all the work that went into making the transition to new school year. And also to those who came even off contract to stand in the potential of helping, taking advantage of our opportunities to help our kids to see more writing this year, so thank you for that. I also had my first ISD thread, and I have some good mentoring interviewings this year.
Thank you. Ms. Gudney?
Thank you, Ms. President. I too want to say welcome back, and also to Troy, Christopher, thank you guys for what you did. It truly was a great event. Student body presidents are gone, so just want to say thanks to them. And last but not least, to my family over at Support Services. Thank you guys for what you guys do. You guys truly are the backbone that keeps this district alive, so thank you. Ms. President.
Thank you, sir. Just quickly for me, I just wanted to recognize the Kingwood High School volleyball, team girls volleyball, won for the third year in a row. Dr. Spencer?
Yeah.
The American Volleyball Coach Association Academic Team Award. That's, that's great stuff, so hats off to them. But also, I just want to acknowledge, because he won't do it, he will do it himself, but Mr. Cunningham, on Friday that we did, will be, will be being interviewed for a TASB regional director seat for the, as Region Four. So they'll be interviewing him on Friday, so let's all fingers crossed, wish you good luck in knocking out.
You've got a good chance.
That's right. And then just last, I just want to say, I had a chance today to be at the CLC. If you haven't been there in a while, or never been there, you really, call Miss Alexander and see if you can come by for a visit. It's just astounding, the programs that go on there. I mean, everything Spark, PACE, the DAP, Moser, Cambridge School, the early learning, I mean, that, that's just, it's just amazing. And just to see what we have going on there, it's just, Dr. Spencer, hats off to U of M System, incredible facility. If you get a chance to go, go up there and see it. And Stacy, thank you again for, not only, again, for sponsoring and complications. Thank you for your, for your gifts this season. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your deep presence. Appreciate you.
Okay. So now we will move to our board action agenda. Ms. Conrad? Oh, I'm sorry. I did that to tell me, let, immediately, and so we go, I'm sorry, do you have any comments? No. I'm not buying them. Dr. Spencer, I am so sorry.
Right, right, you're the president? You mean, you do it every morning?
Yeah.
Well, I really don't have a report today. But I, but I do want to point out, I don't know if any of y'all are part of, because I just think that was really the most special, one of the most special things I've ever experienced, to have all of the high school student body presidents and officers come at a school night to a board meeting to, to say what they said. I just thought that was great. Except, I thought I heard one of them say, "Thank us for being around and visiting their schools when they were little children." Is that possible?
No.
I'm afraid it is.
For some of you.
Hey, we cleared that up in closed session, right? Who was on what side?
That's it, it's true.
Thank you, and I apologize. Okay, now we'll move to the action items for the agenda. Ms. Conrad, any motions out of closed session?
Mr. President, as to the personnel, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented with the dinner.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
As to the personnel, I move that the board approve the superintendent's contracts as discussed in closed session, effective July 1, 2014 through June 3, 2007.
Second. Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Conrad, any motions on minutes?
Yes, sir. As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 12, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the special board workshop held on August 14, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
As to the minutes, I move that the...
Hold on, two more questions.
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the special board meeting held on August 20, 2014.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? You guys are busy beavers.
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the special board meeting held on August 21, 2014.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Might be a break. Okay. And now, we will go to updates of board associations and committees, and you know what, I'm going to plug the education foundation from the top of the list, who are very, very excited to do that. No, I just wanted to make sure that we did give it. So we do have some announcements, the education foundation. Dr. Spencer, I wanted to thank you for reminding me how, hold on, get in. Those kids from elementary school that was first elected to the board, so that's, so thank you. We have some foundation, education foundation highlights, and first of all, we've got a principal for a day. That's when we have members of the community come in, and they are principal for a day at each one of our schools. It's a wonderful event, I'm a principal for a day. About ten years ago, Creekwood Middle School, where one of the students had a little incident in the bathroom where they caught something on fire, so Walt Winnicki and I had to put it out. It was a crazy day. And so I realized what it was like to be a principal for one day, and the same goes on. That is Wednesday, October 8th. It's a great event for our district to show everyone how wonderful our district is and the business community. Second announcement is we have an employee appeal campaign, so to kick off on October 1st, and it's going to run the entire month of October. That's a great source of revenue, it's been increasing over the years, last couple of years, to the employees support the foundation. And it shows you how important the foundation is, not only to our students, but the teachers see, the teachers and the other employees see the importance of the foundation and what it does for the district. So we want to make sure we announce that as, as the time that they can support the foundation, that's included in the district. Last, we have twelve campuses running an annual fund campaign this year, including our first Title I campus on its elementary, so we're going to make that announced here as well. But that's it. We do have a golf tournament coming up, and we'll talk about that next meeting as well, and make sure that we fill out our teams, and make sure that everyone who wants to support the initiative, we'll have that announced. So thank you, Mr. Schor. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to jump back to our oral order, and I'm going to move to the audit committee. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Ms. President. The audit committee, board membership has received our annual report. If you have any questions, Dr. Spencer, myself, or any of the, Ms. Conrad, and Mr. Williams. That's all we have.
Thank you, sir. The board superintendent evaluation processing goals committee, what's with that?
Well, the vote tonight on the superintendent's contract ends that process for us until November. We'll talk about some other things, but other than that, there's no, no report of local.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes, we have the workshop. Yes, that's, that's. We have the workshop next week, and it's going to help us, for you members, to discuss some issues of our process.
Ms. Conrad, I just want to say thank you for all your help in that committee, I know this has been a bit, all the charting and taking us to the next level of technology.
Well, I, I, I kind of started there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant, Dr. Spencer.
That being said, it's, it is a, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and Angela really, really did great this year, and I want to thank you personally for all that work, and trying to work and do the responsibility that you're going to do in this process. But again, thank you, it made it really easy, and I want to thank everybody's input this year. That was a great, great process.
Okay, and Willie Plank, Mr. Annalise, a no report for this evening. Finance committee, we have no report for this evening. Legislative committee?
Yes, sir. Things, yeah, things starting to pick up. We participated in a filming today to talk about what's coming up, legislative session arising in 2015, elections that are coming up in November, the three to five main priorities that are going to be underway for us to help try to influence. So talked a little bit about that. We also had a committee meeting right before this meeting, in which we outlined our plan for getting our local community involved in this process. So be on the lookout on the UML ISD website, we'll get some information to the Observer and the Tribune as well, outlining some community, well, a district legislative committee, district wide legislative meeting, to invite the community out to participate in that process, to, one, become educated on some of the key issues impacting our district, as well as understand the ways that the community can get involved and help influence decision-making in Austin. And so that first meeting, a community meeting, will happen towards the, the last part of October, right before the elections, and then we anticipate we'll have an immediate follow-up meeting in the first part of December, right after the elections in November, just to get an idea of what, how things shook out and, and any changes in direction it might be to take. So more to come, dates to come, they'll be planned for late October, early, so.
Great, while your mic is open, how about advertising?
Advertising is promised. We did a data download. Dr. Spencer got us some information to, to look at, just to see the impact of advertising across the district. A couple of stats to report, just for your information, is that advertising constitutes approximately 0.04% of total district operating revenue. And in addition to that, we learned that approximately seventy percent of that is actually currently under contract and will be for foreseeable future, so that's good to note that, that we're secure at this point in time. So I see ourselves maybe shifting a little bit of focus, at least in the immediate term, on looking at some local advertisement opportunities, not opportunities, but looking at our individual campuses that are doing some things individually with different booster clubs, et cetera, to try to get a standardization and consistency, at least among our schools. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. President, you got a question. What, what is foreseeable future?
Well, a lot of the, a lot of the current agreements are under, under contract for at least the next couple of years, some of them up to seventeen, 2017, 2018.
Second. Mr. Sid, general evaluation?
Yeah, I was just going to, going to remind everyone about the, the scooter group coming in, and they're going to be talking, they're going to be talking about alignment with our programs, as well as margins, benchmarks, those type of things. So outside of that, I still need, I would like for everyone to look at your three-year plans, make any doubts, and give those to me, as we're, we're trying to pull those together, Dr. Price, Ms. Atwood, myself, and the committee, so that we can start moving forward with the evaluation process of our programs.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conrad?
Technology and Vago. Yes, sir. Mr. President, we had our last meeting on September, September, that was last week, where we discussed some of the startup school issues, as well as the update on the summer projects that are taking place in the technology services, and began our discussion of the technology plan and the update for that. We're going to continue that discussion and talk about the pilot projects that are going on in a couple of our campuses, as well as our digital citizenship rollout, and addressing student data privacy and our policies, so that will be at our upcoming meeting, which will be the first Tuesday of October.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will move to our consent agenda, and we'll move through those items. The board has had an opportunity to converse with Dr. Spencer on questions, so some of these items that we do ask consent, it's because we satisfied any questions that there were, and we're ready to move on to action. Okay. Under, you know, this is going to be a little new tonight because it's, it's impacted by our recent policy changes to CH Local, and I just wanted to, I just read this once because it's really going to cover all of these things. Board approval will be required for all purchases of goods and services, indoor services, that aggregate to a value of $50,000 or greater in the fiscal year, fiscal year, and any single item purchased at a value of $25,000 or greater prior to making any commitment with a vendor. This applies to goods, professional services, and non-construction services regardless of the purchasing method, whether it's sole source, inter-local agreement, et cetera. As it relates to facilities construction, board approval will be required for the selection of the architect for each construction project for which the architectural fees are estimated at $50,000 or more, and for construction contracts valued at $50,000 or more. So that's going to apply to, that's why there's many items here that we wouldn't have seen in the past. But I just want to say that, as everybody knows, I know this has taken a little bit of time for this, this whole thing to flow through, and it's kind of new to, to everybody, but we'll work out all the kinks. I just want you to know that the board made this policy change. It's not intended as a got you, or we're trying to do whatever, but we want to continue to ensure and raise the level of our transparency, our accountability, and truly, the policy in that regard is no different than it was, because we always required that POs be in place before we actually took purchase of something, no matter what it might be. And, and we're going to have the, the out-of-policy purchase report that we'll see, and that will help with accountability, and, and honestly, though, there, there will be consequences to not, non-compliance to the policy, because we want to assure that we, as a district, are accountable to the taxpayers and to the stakeholders of the community, and this will help us, we really feel, get there. So I just wanted to state that upfront before we, we go through this. So let's start then with the consent agenda, and the first item under government reports and considerations. That's a, that's a report, so that's the TASB policy update. So I want to open that to any questions that you may have now, as it's an information item that we have, to Dr. Spencer, if any, for now, we'll, we'll come back as an action item next week. Okay, we will move to number, number two. Pardon me, we had a little miscommunication because of the changes we were making here. But all right, we're going to start with, under superintendent's division reports, considerations, and purchases. I to May, the video contract renewal, video recording contract renewal. So that's consent. Contract renewal for Realtrix Easy Communicator Parent Notification System Software Services. That's consent. Under learning division reports, considerations, and purchases. Exceptional class size limit waiver for Spanish immersion. That's consent. Under purchasing C50,000 in the aggregate, or 25,000 individually. First, we have I to B, International Center for Leadership and Education. That's consent. C, Professional Development by Dr. Jean... C, professional development by Dr. Jean Lattick. That's consent. Professional development with the full lead forward. That's consent. IStation, ISIP double. That's consent. Education consultant, student group development. That's consent. E-Spend, E-Star, an education consultant, item G. That's consent. Item H, SHI Government Solutions. That's consent. Okay, next, under Financial Services Division, reports and considerations and purchases. Item A, tax refunds. That's consent. Waiver of principal and interest. That's consent. Budgetary amendments. That's consent. Under purchases exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate. Item D, auditing services, Harris County, Frazel District, fees, tax, data, printing, distribution, software maintenance and support. That's consent. And next, under Human Resources Reports and Considerations and Purchases. Item A, inter-local agreement for background and criminal history check services. That's consent. And item B, pre-assessment teacher applicant screening tool. That's consent. Under Support Services Division Reports and Considerations. Under purchases. Item A, contract for various goods and services related to operations under Support Services Division.
Pulled in.
Okay, that's pulled. Under district-wide reports, considerations and purchases, purchases exceeding $50,000. Item A, district-wide contracts for various goods and services. That will be pulled. Okay. That was quite a lot of them. Ms. Congress? Do we get that back in motion for us?
Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I move that the board approved the following items by consent. Under Superintendent's Division, items A to D. Under Learning Division, items A through H. Item, under Financial Services Division, items A through D. Under Human Resources Division, items A and B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Six to zero. Okay, now we're going to move back to item one on the agenda. And that is a report now on CASB policy update 100. No questions? Dr. Scanzo at this point? Okay. We will move on to... There, another wrong word, one, Financial Services. Any questions to Dr. Scanzo or Mr. Land? So no questions, then we'll move on back to, under item six, Support Services Division Reports. And that was an individual. Are you cutting him? I think you pulled that. I'm sorry, we need more.
So who?
Second from Mr. Land.
Yes, Mr. President, I pulled that, I pulled that to abstain from voting on it. So that was one of the...
Is it one of those questions?
One of the questions I had, abstaining from voting on it.
Because we're reporters.
Yeah, at Centipoint, there's a Centipoint piece on there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I do have a...
Yes?
I was looking through this. Dr. Scanzo, as you know, sent us a lot of these things, multi-year contracts. And do we really need to vote on something that we're here two, three, here three of five? Because we've already voted on it once. And so, like, for example, those are energy contracts at $70,000. We've been there, I'm waiting for it. We voted on that two years ago. And so, we talked about how long the contract, we already had this discussion. Does that really need to be on this list because it's pretty tall? And so, you know, I was just clicking through the things, and when I was looking at the things that were first year, those are the things that I was interested in and looked at. Nothing really caught my fancy in those things, and I thought I could ask some questions about it. Just going forward, we need to talk, we've already had a discussion, we've already had votes, multi-year contract, we can vote on this again. Just a...
Certainly the board would have the option to change or amend CH Local, but under the new CH Local, and I think the utilities is a great example, Mr. President, because you in fact did vote and approve the contract for electricity. But now CH Local requires your approval before we can issue the actual purchase order for paying the services. So it does require double action, but strictly under the policy, that's what I'm...
Okay, that's fine. I just, I thought that was interesting because it did get my name up for second, whatever was.
That's probably one of the unintended consequences of...
That is fine, that's fine. I mean, you guys made it clear, we pointed the committee, because what I was, first thing I did was go down the writing column, which was the emails. And I picked the big ones out, then looked at them first, and then...
Yes?
I actually found it helpful because they have to be in here when they make some of those decisions, but it's also different if it's a client.
And just so everybody knows, in media too, all the detail to the things we voted on are in the board package. You can reference that, and you see all the details. It's actually very nice to, I just want to commend you guys for putting it together and having all that detail made out. It's all there, and everybody can see. And we're voting on adding the amount, but we've got the detail up there.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And just a question, just to go off of Mr. Page. I agree with you on special electricity contracts. I mean, that's what I said. I guess my question would be for some of the other contracts where we renew annually. Does that same thought apply? You know, when we renew annually? And you do look at it out for 35 years, since you renew annually?
No, I think those are on here, but those are the ones that are one-year last or assume that we have annually.
Okay.
So, you know, if we have a question, it's usually just making the dollar, I mean, it's a thing you... Food, that's the big dollar item. There's some individual things for things like playing around materials, a big one. Ice cream, dairy products.
Yeah.
Of course, the paper, there's notice on our video, the video meetings, which are very rare, there's things like that. These are for trials. These are things that you might consider if you vote on for the... So there's no discussions. So it's good to have this in just to... We're talking about the training. No, I think this is a great policy, and this is good, you can see this is... The only thing that's more transparent is to see the money is going to the district.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say, is that when we, and Mr. President, thank you for bringing this up, when we pushed the issue a year ago. The fact that it is, you know, several pages of items and several things on the consent agenda for us to look at, we knew the byproduct of that was going to be, we're going to have a lot of stuff to look at. So it's just, I wouldn't want to change the policy, and I don't think, I don't think you do now either.
Oh, no, I don't want to change the policy also. I just had the initial clarification. Yeah, and so now, now I, because, you know, a contract like that is something that we need to, and we did have a discussion, so just to avoid that going forward, but it's now that I know this life, it's...
But, and Ms. Congress, and Ms. Land had told us that this was, this was the kind of event that was going to happen when we started this, so it's...
And you know, the finance committee, they worked through that for a couple, four months. I, my opinion, I think this is, looks good at this point. You know, later on, we could always make it just, yes, Congress.
I just have a question about, maybe this is more often, like going forward, so somebody singleized, let's say, for example, the human resources. That was just one item on that one sheet. So is something else to add, say, that, will that become a cumulative thing, or will it be something that will be added?
Just a reminder.
But that will all be kept cumulative?
Well, it won't be presented to the committee. We will have the records here.
It will look just like it does before?
Correct. For the wire.
More discussion? All in favor? We should put it across the stage. And one extension. Now we will move to item seven, district-wide reports consideration. Dr. Scanzo, we pulled this because we need to...
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to amend my recommendation here, and specifically, if you will look on attachment page five. The third item down reads sole source student ID badge system and software. The amended recommendation I want to make is to strike the 1.55 million dollar number, and in its place, 150,000 should be my recommended.
Did you find a bit more supplier for that?
Actually, I have a better mathematical formula.
So move to the consent, the student group information is discussed. All those, any discussion, I'm sorry, on the amended motion? It's just a bit, yeah, on the amendment. We have to accept that. We both do accept that. All in favor? Now, now we can vote for the original. To approve the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, now we're going to move to item A, future board business. Anyone have any items they'd like to...
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't have the workshop date.
Next week?
Two, sir.
Two.
Sixteen? Six o'clock.
Any other items? Dr. Scanzo, go ahead.
This is a fact, for anyone and everyone present, that workshop next week is a closed session, workshop, because it involves discussion of the secret services.
One item I'd like to add, Dr. Scanzo, I wanted to ask if you and maybe with Ms. Malstrom and Mr. Price's help, something that came across to Mr. Angolagi from Lady District, this attitude, I don't think in relation to our principal, Katie Ness. But she was asking about if there was a possibility we could offer to senior citizens in our district, a senior gold card that would allow them entry into all district athletic events, cultural events, fine arts programs at our schools. And she was, she actually sent a copy of, a friend of hers had one, Katie offers this program, and I'm not saying we have to copy what everybody else does, but it's certainly a good idea that we could look into, and I don't mind copying good ideas. And that might be, I think, also a nice gesture and I think too promotion for us, for the district, to have those folks involved and to see what, if you have the tax rates, so what the dollars are going to, and it'd just be great to have them engaged. And so if we could...
Well, on behalf of those of us who are close to that, I think it's a great idea. Not being facetious, I think Mr. Kite and Ms. Malstrom had the idea originally, and so, Mr. Kite, do you want to speak with them?
We do have one in place, that's for all events, it gives them in for a dollar.
Oh, we do.
It's what? I'm sorry?
It's one, they give in minutes to any event for one dollar. That's what we already have in place. We don't really put out a marketing.
But I guess we need to...
No, but that's why, I mean, seriously, that's why I want to make it happen. But I understand Katie, but they had the idea originally.
No, no, that's great. You got to make sure people know, I mean, some way to get that out there, there's... Brent didn't know, he told the slave, oh, you know, you can get one. I wouldn't have either.
If this is something that we want to add to a discussion, we need to add it to a future agenda because it's not this agenda, it's not here. And so if I'm going to have this discussion, I want to make sure...
It's on the market, huh? Okay. Anything else? Okay, and yet I will call them closed. Thank you.